To all at this time, we do have a court seven of seven. Shall we stand for invocation, pledge, and legislative pledge, please?
Let us pray. Most heavenly Father, we just thank you for bringing us all here together tonight to do the county's business, dear Lord, and just give us the wisdom to make the decisions that will be the best for the county and just guide us as we go through this. And everybody that got here tonight, Lord, got here safely, just hopefully that you will let them get home safely also if it be your will. In Jesus' holy and precious name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Blessings to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on our agenda is the approval of our agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Sorry.
If a motion is seconded, the agenda be approved, are there any questions? All in favor? Seven yes. The next, the approval of our minutes?
No move.
Sorry.
A motion and minute, a motion is seconded, the minutes be approved, are there any questions? All in favor? Seven yes. The next on our agenda is to approve the claims.
No move, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it.
Motion is seconded, the claims be approved, are there any questions? All in favor? Seven yes. Are there any announcements? Here now, the first thing on that is each presentation is a resolution for the Mr. Snotty, Monroe Snotty, one that have served this county well, served the community well. And we're here to honor him tonight and thank his family for coming and ask that you were staying and come forward, please, at this time.
Thank y'all for coming. We had this on the agenda for last month and it didn't, family had some conflict, so we put it back on. Ivan Monroe Snotty departed this life on July the 18th, 2024, at the age of 90. Ivan Monroe Snotty was born on December the 25th, 1933. Whereas Ivan Monroe Snotty was the son of Ivan and Alice Snotty. Ivan Monroe Snotty was preceded in death by his wife of 60 years, Janie Snotty, and eight siblings, and a granddaughter, Alyssa Snotty. Whereas Ivan Monroe Snotty, sir, is survived by his son Ricky Snotty and Rebecca of Mechanicsville, Vicky and Lee Shepherd of New Canton, and Freddie and Wendy of Scott, Snotty of Scottsville, grandchild Victoria Marks and Stephen, Chris Tony and Kelly, Clint Tony, May Snotty and Robin, and Jack Snotty, Jimmy Snotty, as well as great grandchildren Haley and Michael Tony, and his brother Wayne Snotty and Sharon. Whereas Monroe Ivan's Monroe, Ivan Monroe Snotty, all I ever knew was Monroe, I'm sorry, he cut my hair forever. Ivan Monroe Snotty was a member of Mount Tabor Baptist Church, where he served as a deacon and Sunday School superintendent. Whereas Ivan Monroe Snotty was on the Buckingham School Board for 12 years and on the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors for 22 years, where he served his citizens of Buckingham County well. Whereas Ivan Monroe Snotty was most, mostly known for being the local barber for 65 years. I'm 55, so he cut my hair a long time. And where he was loved and loved to catch up with his customers and cherished his friendships. Whereas Ivan Monroe Snotty was loved and respected by all who knew him and were greatly missed. Therefore, now therefore by the, it's disre, it's resolute that the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors does in memorial this ninth day of September 2024 will pay tribute and express its highest esteem for Ivan Monroe Snotty and send our deepest sympathies to his family and loved ones. Thank y'all for coming.
Amen.
Thank you.
One need to carry the beat, bro.
Yeah. You have me think the family members are coming?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good to see you, Ricky. How you doing, bro?
Thank you, Sam. Call. Call. Hey, the resolution for Ms. Jones, Mary S. Jones?
How you doing, bro?
Thank you.
Good to see you, my friend.
Okay. Will you, okay, will you read the resolution for me? This is, uh, his wife's and family is not here tonight, they'd be here next month, asking Mrs. Mary S. Jones' family? Okay.
Good evening, we'd like to thank you all for attending as we, got a couple more? For attending this evening as we remember the life of Mary Shelton Jones here in Buckingham County. The resolution in memorial expressing the consensus of the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors regarding the life and service of Mary Shelton Jones. Whereas Mary Shelton Jones was the youngest of 11 children born to Edward Lee and Willie Lethia Shelton. Her early, early education began at Buckingham County's Carter's Field School, a one-room school, and concluded with her graduation from Buckingham Training School. After graduation, Mary S. Jones saved diligently for college and graduated from Virginia State College, now Virginia State University, in 1953. She later returned to VSU to earn a master's degree in 1976. Ms. Shelton Jones was married to the late Rolf Leon Jones in 1953, and they shared 43 years of marriage and together they reared their four children, Leona, Belinda, Cassandra, and Rolf. Whereas Ms. Jones began her journey of faith and service at Jerusalem Baptist, where she remained a devoted member throughout her life. She served Jerusalem in various roles, including church clerk, deaconess, Sunday School teacher, vacation Bible School teacher, and choir member. Within the Buckingham religious community, she served as president of the United Baptist Association and the Women's Missionary and Educational Convention of Central Virginia for many years. Whereas Ms. Mary S. Jones was a passionate community leader and actively involved in numerous civic, religious, and educational organizations, including Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, the Virginia State University Alumni Association, the National and Virginia Retired Teachers Association, the Buckingham Voters League, the NAACP, and the Friends of the Library. She was a charter member of Club 25, an organization that supported scholarships, family life programs, and Black History Month programs. Whereas Ms. Mary Shelton Jones dedicated 40 years of her life to being a teacher in Buckingham County, beginning, beginning her career at the Red Bottom School, a segregated one-room schoolhouse in the Warminster Baptist Church community. She was transferred to Washington Carver Elementary School, later renamed Gold Hill Elementary after desegregation of the Buckingham County school system. Her last teaching position was at Dillon Elementary School, and I remember her from there, 7th grade. Teaching was not just a profession, but a profound calling, reflecting her commitment to her students and our community. Therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors do by hereby recognize and express our deepest appreciation to Mary Shelton Jones for her 40 years of dedication to education and for her unwavering service to the communities of Buckingham County. We express our deepest condolences to her family and to her friends, and this is signed by our chairman, Mr. Joe Chambers.
Thank you, man, appreciate it. Is Mr. Beasley here?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, appreciate the opportunity to, to be here this evening and share what I think is a very exciting opportunity for the county and their court system. First of all, I want to take advantage of this opportunity to thank you, the board, and call and others with the county for your support of the Commonwealth Attorney's Office with their budget and other matters. We certainly appreciate it and feel well-supported and encouraged here in the county. The, the second thing before we begin is I want to share my predecessor, E.M. Wright, several years ago, worked hard to get a position for our office, a full-time assistant attorney position that is funded by the Compensation Board. That position has not been filled up until recently. We're waiting to, to find the, the right person, and we certainly believe that we have, have done that. And so I want to introduce you all today to Alyssa Phipps. She is seated behind me, she will actually do the presentation. Alyssa Phipps just found out she passed the Virginia bar exam on Friday. This morning, she was sworn in by Judge Blessing as a Virginia attorney and also as an assistant Commonwealth attorney here in Buckingham County. I assure you, she is going to be a great asset for the county. She is very talented, very bright, and, and what we want to share with you today is about the Central Virginia Recovery Court. And Ms. Phipps, she's interned in my office for the past two years before she was hired as an assistant Commonwealth attorney. And she has been integral in getting us to the point where we've been approved for this Central Virginia Recovery Court. And so she is going to, to share some information about that court with you right now. Thank you.
Just give me a second to get set up. Good evening, my name is Alyssa Phipps, as Mr. Beasley just said, as of today, actually, sworn in this morning. I am the assistant Commonwealth attorney here in Buckingham County. During my time as an intern in Mr. Beasley's office, I worked, one of my projects that I worked on was getting the recovery court started here in Buckingham County. So I'm just going to present to you guys today a little bit about what a recovery court is. So a recovery court is a specialized court docket program. So basically what that means is it's a docket that hears certain kinds of cases about certain kinds of offenses. So in this case, in the recovery court, we hear offenses related to substance abuse or those stemming from substance abuse. As I stated, I played a role in creating the recovery court program. And one of the ways that we get started with a recovery court program is an application process. The application process is pretty rigorous. I think we ended up submitting nearly 50 pages, a procedure and policy manual, everything that kind of details out what our recovery court program is. So we submitted that and we were approved as a recovery court by the Supreme Court of Virginia on June 28th. So this approval is a testament to the alignment of our plan with our rigorous standards, and it carries considerable weight that we were approved by a specific committee on the Supreme Court of Virginia. So oftentimes when you hear about recovery courts or recovery programs, there's a lot of misconceptions that come along with the word recovery program or recovery court. And so I just want to kind of clarify some things that this, this program is not. And one of those things that this program is not is a get out of jail free card. One of the interesting things about our program is it's done through phases, and these vag, phases have rigorous requirements, oftentimes requirements that can even be more stringent than what you find in jail or prison. For example, we drug test participants weekly, up to three to four times a week, including holidays, weekends. Also, we make surprise home visits, they have a curfew, they're required to be in educational and vocational programs. And really, we're just aiming towards creating individuals who are going to be active participants in the Buckingham community. Another misconception is that we're kind of just letting these violent criminals back out in the community roaming around. But actually, there's statutory requirements in order for you to create a recovery court program. And one of those statutory requirements is that they cannot be a participant if they are a violent criminal, if they have a violent charge such as like malicious wounding or anything of that sorts. So these participants, they're constantly monitored, tested, and held accountable in the court system. And even so much that if they do mess up, and depending on how they mess up, they actually can end up right in, in jail. So it's not a get out of jail free card, and it's not even a program for first-time offenders. And the reason I bring that up is because one of the things that's so different about a recovery court is that we add a treatment component along with the criminal justice side of things. And so when we work alongside these treatment providers, these individuals are actually deemed medically addicted to drugs and they have a disorder that we're trying to treat. So how does recovery court work? So our recovery court is actually a tad bit different in the fact that it's a multi-jurisdictional recovery court. And with that being said, so we've partnered basically with Prince Edward County, Cumberland County, and then Buckingham County. So it's going to be the Central Virginia Recovery Court. With that being said, with all of these actors, it's not the typical people you see in court like a Commonwealth attorney, a defense attorney, and a judge. There are so many more actors. So the recovery court team consists of the circuit court judge, a Commonwealth attorney, defense counsel, a probation officer, a treatment provider, law enforcement, and a coordinator. And what's very unique about a recovery court program is that the judge's role actually shifts. And so typically, a judge will see an offender for the first time and kind of make the decision of what that individual's future holds right then and there and possibly never see them again. In the recovery court program, the judge actually has a different role in getting to know the individual, getting to know who they are, about their family, their goals, their dreams, their hopes, things that, you know, a lot of the times when they walk into court or have walked into court before, isn't something they feel is heard. And also, when the judge is looking at them in a different way, it almost gives them incentive to go down the right path and kind of follow the guidelines that we set before them. So some of the key components of this recovery court is the, the regular drug testing that I touched on, the intensive treatment and rehabilitation services, and then there's incentives and sanctions to kind of keep them on the right track. So what are the benefits of this recovery court program? So Central Virginia Recovery Court Program, we follow the evidence-based models. And based on the evidence-based practices and the models, there are four consistent goals that these recovery courts have. And one of them is reduction in recidivism, which is making sure they're not re-offending, which is obviously a goal because we don't want to see them back in the court system and we want to see them succeed. Now, the Supreme Court of Virginia gets statistics from every recovery court in the state of Virginia. And these statistics, they compile into a final kind of model of what, what happened that year in recovery court. And as you can see, there are lowered rates of recidivism through these plans. It's a reduced burden on our criminal justice system because we're not seeing these individuals back in court. It's improved public health, and I'll expand on that just to, to touch. Oftentimes, when you see individuals who are charged with drug-related offenses, it's not, that's not where it ends. It's property charges as well, property damage charges, domestic violence charges, theft, larceny. All of those things are attached to the outcomes. And so when you're targeting this drug abuse and this drug addiction problem, you're seeing a lowered rate in these other crimes that also affect Buckingham County. And additionally, it's a lowered cost compared to traditional incarceration. So it's costing the taxpayer less money when they're sent through this program than they are through the traditional case route. One of the last things I'll touch on is kind of the program duration and how it's set up. So the program can range from 18 to 24 months. It's based on phases. So once they do all the requirements for one phase, they go to the next phase, so forth, so forth, until graduation. And one of the fun things is there's actually a graduation ceremony for them held in court, which once again, some of these individuals have never even considered the term graduation in any aspect of their life. And so that's another incentive when they watch other people graduate from this program. It's incentive for them to want to do the same thing, want to be better, want to graduate. I want to see myself achieve something that has the same weight of a graduation. And so, once they graduate, they, each phase has increased responsibilities and then they graduate. So where are we now? So as I stated in the beginning, we were approved by the Supreme Court of Virginia on June 28th. So right now, we're kind of identifying who our actual team members are going to be. We're starting some team meetings, we're developing a budget, forms, all those things that we would need in court and, and to practice, all of these things. We've recently created a memorandum of understanding between the, the three counties that are kind of creating this core Central Virginia Recovery Court. And then we're also applying for training opportunities, and we're looking for a current coordinator who will be in charge of running the program. So if anyone does have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer any of them at this time.
The board member have a question for her?
What is the, what is the outcome if they, if they fail out of the program? Say you drug test them on a holiday, a weekend, and they, and they test dirty. I mean, does that kick them out of the program or did they get a second chance or?
So it, it depends on the severity of, of what they tested for, what their conditions were for that phase, all these things. But if they test negative, most likely there are consequences, they're going to go to jail. So it's not, they're not just getting...
They're basically out of the program and go ahead and finish your sentence?
Yes.
Okay, that was, that was one of the questions I had.
Can the board member have a question? And not be, thank you for coming and making a presentation.
If I may just say to follow up?
Yes, sir.
Just follow up on a question. When, when a person enters this program, usually there's an agreement where it's a carrot and stick. The individual has agreed to plead guilty and understands if they, they will get this much jail time. However, if they successfully complete the program, they'll get either less jail time or no jail time. So if they're unsuccessful, then they've already agreed to whatever the punishment will be at that time.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Actually, just coming to know this call, yes, sir. Got an update from Robinson, Farmer, and Cox Associates, update?
Everyone?
Good afternoon.
I am back again tonight to talk about numbers this time for the FY23 audit over some of our required communications with the board. Our audit, as in the past, has been performed in accordance with government auditing standards, the APA specifications for audits of county, cities, and towns, and the Single Audit Act, which covers the federal awards provisions of the Uniform Guidance. So we did perform our audit in accordance with those standards. This year, there was a new standard, a GASB, that was required to be implemented, and that was for GASB Statement Number 96, which is on subscription-based information technology arrangements. You'll also hear those referred to as BIDAs or SPIDA's. But they basically treat those agreements like the leases are treated. So last year, the lease standard in FY22, the lease standard was implemented, and that brings those leases onto your books where you see those as a liability. In the past, you only saw those if they were capital leases. Now, all leases are shown on your books, so you've got from last year, lease receivables, lease payables. This year, in addition to that, there are now subscription assets and liabilities. So there was one of those that required recording in accordance with this new standard. As far as accounting estimates, those are similar to prior years. They consist of the useful lives of capital assets, the incremental borrowing rate on your leases. Those are discounted at present value, so that information is included. The allowance for uncollectible property taxes, accrued leave, net pension liabilities, net OPEV liabilities, and then the related deferred inflows and outflows related to those. Of course, those final things are actually related based on calculations provided by the actuary that VRS contracts with. But all the localities in the state receive information. But all the localities in the state receive information, and that has to be added to the financial statements as well. Um, as part of our audit, we did propose uh several uh audit adjustments to management, have discussed those with management. And um, you know, those are kind of similar to last year. One of the things we did this year, um the EMS fund uh was showing a deficit balance in cash, um basically reflecting the fact that the Dominion Grant had been fully spent. Um, so the general fund is now um helping to support that fund, um since those other funds have run out. So one of those, um reclassifying federal and state revenues, um some other adjustments, um the Water World Deal, um just tidying up how those transactions were recorded. Um, and like I said, those are pretty similar to prior years. Um, just going through, you know, making sure that financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with GAAP, which is what you have to um base your financial statements on. We did obtain the required management representations. Um, there were no consultations with other accountants about auditing or accounting matters. Um, as far as the financial statements themselves, um we performed certain procedures, limited procedures on required supplementary information, your MDNA, your schedules for your pension and OPEB funding. Um, then we do review the budgetary comparison information in a little more detail. Um, so we do an in relation to opinion on that, basically saying they're fairly stated um based on your financial statements. And then um also review the other supplementary information, some of your combining statements, your budgetary schedules, and then the CFA. So uh we did express unmodified opinions on those, um so the financial statements, the Yellow Book Opinion, and also the federal compliance. Um, we did review the VRS attestation, um filed that with the APA last year, actually. Um, and there was only one item brought to the attention in that, and that was something that the school board corrected promptly upon bringing it to their attention. Um, but as far as other recommendations, um we've had several conversations with management about the accruals and um reconciliations and the preparation of the financial statements in accordance with GAAP. Um, just for some, a summary of the fund balance uh condition at the end of fiscal year twenty-three, the general fund had a beginning fund balance of twelve point um six million dollars, had a decrease of five hundred thousand, so a twelve point one million dollar um ending fund balance. Now, I will mention that we talked about a transfer of uh one point one million dollars to the EMS fund to cover the cash deficit there. So also, there was a transfer of cash, accumulated cash from the VPA Fund or Social Services, um just from accumulated earnings over the years that actually transferred back to the general fund. So those two things were somewhat offset. Um, so, so that helps your fund balance at the end of the day. So you didn't have that huge uh one million dollar decrease from the funding for the EMS fund. Um, another thing that I wanted to point out as far as the balances themselves, there are several restricted funds. Um, part, as part of the general fund, um in twenty-three, there were some new construction funds for schools. And um those are actually required to be spent on school construction. So since the school fund is ju- zeroed out every year and they don't carry a fund balance, there's eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars that was transferred back into the general fund. And that is earmarked as restricted for those purposes, and that's a state requirement. Um, it was just a new uh source of funding for them this year that has to be returned to them and spent on the state uh school construction. Um, some other things that are committed, um of course, you're all aware of, the Jean Dixon Park Expansion, one point seven million dollars. The animal control facility, one point three million. Commitments, generally, you can make a decision to change those. Um, the restricted funds like the eight hundred thousand we talked about with the schools, you cannot make changes to that, that's a state mandate. Uh, but committed funds, you could decide to change your mind on those. So um you might have a little more wiggle room on your fund balance, but the unassigned portion was five point eight million, which represented about twenty-seven percent of expenditures, so about three months' worth. Um, which is um at, you know, we would want to see that as a minimum. Uh, some of the other funds, like I said, the EMS fund um dropped to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The water and sewer, small in uh decreases, eleven million in the water fund, uh six point seven million in the sewer fund. Um, unspent ARPA funds, you still had um two point eight million dollars to be spent at the end of twenty-three. Of course, that's now changed a lot, I'm sure. Um, based on twenty-four, and then you have until December um to spend those funds, so I'm sure those are being spent down as well. The school funds, uh like I said, the operating fund does not carry a fund balance. Um, the cafeteria fund had a small decrease, seventy thousand dollars, so there's four hundred thousand in that fund. And then the school activity funds a few years ago had to be pulled onto the financial statements, and those had a very minor change, three thousand dollars, so two hundred and seventy-two thousand in that fund. I already mentioned that uh GASB ninety-six was implemented this year. Um, then there are two new standards coming up. One, uh that's effective for fiscal year twenty-four, and it really only impacts um changes made within the reporting entity. So probably will not have a huge impact on you. Um, if there's an error correction in the financial statements, um, you know, there are certain requirements, but no big change there. In fiscal year twenty-five, the um compensated absences standard will be effective, and that is actually going to change the way that accrued leave is reported. Um, in the past, sick leave was only reported as a liability if it was paid out. Most localities do not pay out sick leave um upon termination, but now it's actually based on whether that leave will be used. So that will be a change um that, you know, management will be starting to gear up for now to gather that information, to be able to record that and make sure the financial statements include that information. So there's a lot of um, a lot of changes coming down from GASB that um have a pretty big impact on the financial statements, on the government-wide statements. Um, most of those changes don't impact the fund statements, which boards are usually more interested in. Um, so that's just a general highlight of uh what we had. I wanted to also mention the cash in the um water and sewer funds. Um, the cash flow statement there showed that there was a one hundred thousand dollar increase in cash in those funds, so there were five point two million um in those funds, and that's an interesting statement to look at as well. Any questions?
I don't know if this question is for you or if it's for Carl. Help me understand when you said the money out of the general fund to fund EMS because of the uh Dominion Grant being spent. Is that a recurring expense? Are we still taking it out of the general fund every year, or did we build that into the budget?
We did. So remember, this is for FY twenty-three.
Right, yeah. No, I'm, I'm just, I'm just questioning, I'm, I'm pretty sure we built it into the budget.
So you remember, we did a tax increase for two years in a row to replenish that money. So we knew it was going to draw on the general fund for that one year, and then we increased that tax rate.
I just want to make sure I'm.
Yes, sir.
I make sure I'm hearing it correctly.
Any more questions? Not, we thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't forget to file your taxes today if you haven't already. Extended deadline, fun day.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize to to come before you again, but um I want to introduce a distinguished guest, the Honorable Donald Blessing.
Cameron, you see anybody distinguished around here?
I do, Mr. Blessing.
So uh um, I'd like to defer some time for him to speak with you.
Well, I appreciate you putting up with me. I'm really entitled because I'm used to it not starting until I get there. So if one of y'all want to find me, go ahead. Um, I couldn't be in better hands with my fine Commonwealth attorney and our newest member of the bar who's an assistant, Ms. Phipps. Before I talk to you about Central Virginia Drug Court, I got to tell you what a good job you've done and you've done in the past. You go down to that courthouse of yours. Anybody ask me, and I'm a chief judge of the whole circuit, as far as I'm concerned, this is the best courthouse in the circuit. We have the Court of Appeals coming here in the spring, pull that off, which I think is kind of neat. But here's what I think so great about it. It's up to date, it's modern, you walk into it, it looks like it was just built the other day and occupied. But it was the gold standard that I could use everywhere else to say, hey, I want these TVs, I want this audio visual, I want all these doodads, so we could stay in business during COVID. Because these TVs, whatever you want to call the communication system, then it kept us in business. Enough of that, but it is true heartfelt. Thank you. Look, I know you've said a lot about Central Virginia Recovery Court. Couple of things, we are the first recovery court in the state of Virginia. What you used to call a drug court. In fact, they changed that in June of this year. The governor signed a bill, so we changed the name, so all of us are trying to wrap our tongues around recovery court other than drug court. Working on forming our team now. Uh, the team is designated by a certain, we have to have representative from each county. I have to say, we had a formed meeting, yes, who attended. You know, it's kind of hard to say no when I lean on you a little bit, but you attended and you were happy and you soaked it all in. Um, not saying he's the only county administrator, but we did have good attendance. Uh, service, we're going to be centered in Farmville because that's where all the services are from. Traditionally, when we provide services to these people, I guess you've covered this. Is there anybody here that doesn't think that we have a drug problem in South Side, Virginia or Buckingham County? We do, there's a drug problem everywhere, whether you see it or not. These folks are our neighbors, they need to be helped in some form or fashion, but you got to change the way you think. Traditional court, you go to court, if you've done something wrong, you take responsibility you have imposed on. There's nothing wrong with that concept, but it doesn't work. When I say these people, it sounds like I'm talking about them differently than, maybe I am, but they're our neighbors, they're our friends. What has been going on has not been working. A lot of these people, as you might imagine, come from backgrounds that some of us can't imagine, certainly not as blessed. I had good parents, I bet every one of y'all had at least one of my two good parents. They don't have that background, they don't know how to make good decisions. And we have to retrain their thinking and our thinking. There's still punishment, but the last thing you do is jail them, they have to earn that. Uh, we start them out, we want to test them all the time, and I want them to show up for the tests. They test negative for drugs, great, we'll find out what's in them, we can attack it, but we've got to build trust first. And sooner or later, these people will start getting accountability and testing negatively, all right? But these are people who've been used to come to court, I'm just as guilty as anybody else, I was a defense attorney for thirty years. But they walk into court, they get fussed at, they get their behinds chewed, and they get some adverse consequence. Not saying that they haven't earned it, but it's a big leap for them to come in and say, oh, I'm going to be treated differently now, I'm going to be supportive, I'm going to get services. I don't know if you gave them the statistic, but for each person you put them in a recovery court, you save about nineteen thousand dollars per person per year. That's, that's very significant. We were turned down initially, Melissa wrote our grant, she did a wonderful, or our application, she did a wonderful job, but nobody gets it the first time. Y'all may not know me real well. I don't know if this is good or bad when I'm about to say it, but I got a little bit of Bobby Snotty in me. So I reached out to the person who turned down our application. I wrote a very conciliatory email saying, hey, coach me up, help me, what did we do wrong? And she essentially emailed me back and told me to pound sand. Never had like that. I grew up as an only child, you can say I was entitled, my mama spoiled me. But I went to work, I called everybody that I knew. And my favorite person is a judge who's retired in the other end of the circuit, Joel Cunningham, when it comes to drug court. He introduced me around, I got people on both sides of the political aisle, if you want to talk politics. And, but I called Joel. Two phone numbers, emailed him on two email addresses, never heard from him, never heard from him. I said, what have I done wrong? Joel Cunningham's the man. Well, in the first day of judicial conference, early June, he comes in, he sets his books down around the rest of us, drops them, sits over next to me, he said, Blessing, I haven't been blowing you off, what are you going to do this afternoon? I reckon I'm going to do whatever you tell me to do. Said, come with me to the drug, at that time, still drug court. Come with me to the drug court, mean, I said, I've been with you the last three or four years. He said, come with me today. So I sat with him, little table up front, I didn't know he was making a presentation, that was fine. So he sat back down after his presentation, this lady looked at him kind of funny, and he pointed at her, pointed at me, went like that. So after this meeting came, she made a beeline to me, I got a hug and a peck on the cheek. That was the woman who turned me down and told me to pa- pound sand. She said, I've been talking to Joel, I think we can reconsider you on June twenty-eighth. Uh, we were formed on June twenty-eighth. We got good enthusiastic people. I tried this in twenty fourteen when I became a judge, didn't have any support. But enthusiastic, Megan Clark Commonwealth Attorney in Prince Edward County, enthusiastic. Wendy, Wendy Hannah in Cumberland, enthusiastic. And they all decided that they would divide up this turf, they've got a vision for what need, and I think everybody there sees that it ain't working. So those were the kudos. I'm not going to talk any longer because you get tired of it after a while. I was town attorney for thirty years, I know when to stop. But if you have any questions either now or in any other way, I encourage you to try to get in touch with me, I'll email you back. Kemper, any of Melissa, Melissa's worked extensively on this, but I thank you for your time. And I real, really do mean everything I've said, but I particularly do mean I'll kept us in business during COVID with that. Anybody got any questions? Afraid, you've never been afraid to ask me a question before?
No, sir, I just want to tell you, we, we are lucky in Buckingham to have you here, Mr. Blessing, and um, I, we'd rather not see you, we'd rather email you.
I would like to say that I feel lucky to be in Buckingham. When we were dividing up turf early on, some of the people who supported me said, we want you in Buckingham. And I've always practiced in Buckingham. But this is a good place to be, got a good clerk, Commonwealth attorney, sheriff is responsive. Good prior Commonwealth attorney who had a vision, who's your county attorney. I just think um there's a great pride in this county amongst its citizens. I'm not talking about you guys up here. All got a job to do, you know you're representing, but but all these people here and all these people who are not here got a great pride in this county. Now, not to say my home county, Prince Edward, doesn't have a pride, or Cumberland doesn't have a pride, but everybody, even when you're mad at everybody, everybody's family. Look out for each other. Anyway, I, I know you got business to attend to. I thank you for giving me some time when I was a little bit tardy. Set to fine, all right?
I think we've seen you work your sideline before.
Yeah, I know that.
Line to the other.
Well, you know that other, that other man?
Yes, sir.
He used to walk at sideline with me, he's ninety-seven years old, still living at home, and told me he was going to call his, one of his two grandsons when I got off the phone with him. My daddy's ninety-seven years old, lives across the street from me. Off the sidelines with Cameron, and I went to all his ballgames.
Somebody say you were better than him, Mr. Blessing.
And that's the most, that's the best thing that somebody could say about somebody, is they're a great dad.
Yes, sir.
Good to see you. I tried to call you a little bit earlier, but just to make sure.
All right, I want to thank you, thank you, Judge. May I ask next on our agenda, public comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have two individuals signed up to speak this evening. Uh, the first is Joe Snotty, and he'll be followed by Linda Morales.
Mr. Snotty?
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Evening, sir.
Board supervisors, Joe Snotty, uh one seven eight Foxfire Road, Scottsville, Virginia, District Five. Um, unfortunately, I haven't seen him already, it's my quarter for jury duty, so I'll probably see him again this week. So I'm on the dock.
That's the best way to see him, Joe.
I guess, I would rather do that, I guess. Um, reason why I'm coming by, uh the, the reason for, for swinging by here this afternoon, this evening, is uh to let you know that as uh the vice chair of the school board and the chairman for the salary, for the teacher salaries, um as I've already spoken to Mr. Garrett uh at our, at our meeting last week, is we're at the final three uh courses of action or documents for a salary increase or salary pay scale adjustment for our, our teachers and parents. This is a cursory drive-by, just to let you know, we know that there's issues with budget across the board. This is a cursory drive-by. Just to let you know, we know that there's issues with budget across the board. We're working to address those. We would like to invite, one, two, three members of the Board of Supervisors to either assist us or give us some help with this. I know that there's a couple individuals at least that are interested in budgetary stuff. But we're looking at an initial cost, anywhere from $700,000 to about 1.2, 1.5. Initial cost. That's not including the follow-on with the yearly steps that haven't been happening, according to our previous meetings in here as well, that haven't happened. So we're looking to address those. We're estimating those to be in around $200,000, $250,000 a year probably, depending on how we do the initial steps. So we're looking at that, just to let you know that we're working it, but we hope to invite. We have a meeting probably once, the first, excuse me, the first and third Tuesdays right now of every month. We just had one this week to replace last week. So if you have anybody that's interested, please let me know. I know a few of you got my number, emails out there obviously, but if you want to, I'll be here the rest of the meeting. So if anybody wants to jump on board or come join or let me know it ain't happening or whatever advice you've got, please let me know. And I appreciate your, your support and everything. If there's any questions, please let me know.
Right, so Snotty?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Snotty.
Good evening, gentlemen. First of all, I would like to thank the supervisors, especially my supervisor of District 2, Mr. Gilliam, who got the flashing red stoplight put at 632 and 60, that intersection. I'm absolutely confident that it's going to save lives. So with that being said, he said that he was not going to stop asking the DOT for that sign every month until he got it. So with that in mind, I'm also readdressing an old issue that I had brought up to you about getting some assistance with some funding for my Veterans Greenhouse Training Program. I am trying to create some jobs here, gentlemen. I'm trying to create some tax income for the county, and right now, I can't do it yet. So that's about it. I just wanted to thank you again and thank Cameron Gilliam. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next on the agenda is Roden Madison, Mr. Scott Frederick.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for having me tonight. Got a quick update for you on what we've been up to the last month. We started primary mowing today. We started on 15. We had our Buckingham area headquarters working on the south end of 15, and we also had the Dillon area headquarters working on the north end of 15. With good weather and no equipment breakdowns, we should be finished primaries within about two weeks. We had a pipe fail on Allen Lake Road with all that rain we got from the aftermath of Hurricane Helene. And the day it failed, we went out there and stuck pipes back in and backfilled it with gravel to get the people that live on the other side of it in and out. And then we started today on a permanent repair, so we're going to keep one lane of traffic going and put the pipes in the way they should be put in now. So we'll be finished with that. Hopefully by the next meeting, I'll give you a final update on that. We've been working on other drainage throughout the county, two spots specifically, both on 15. One at Johnson Station Road, there was a pipe that failed there, and it looks like the fiber optic install might have caused some damage to it. And then with all the rain, water, the material around the pipe got washed out. So they'll be fixing that. And then the other one that we found with all this rain is near Jack's over on 15. The pipe there was rusted out and it failed. After the storm was over, we added about 3,500 tons of stone throughout the county. It was about 2,000 in the Buckingham area headquarters and about approximately 1,500 in the Dillon area headquarters. But we worked overtime. We worked Friday, Saturday. We didn't leave until we got through the whole gravel road network, got it all machined. We still have a few trees to clean up on the sides of the road. The worst one that I know of is on 60 out near the Appomattox Line, but we're going to drop back and cut all the, any debris that's still, still down is going to get cut up and removed. The shoulder widening project on 15, they got the shoulder widening done and the striping complete. So that's a good project. It's about to wrap up. The 669 railroad crossing, a lot of people have been interested in that. I've been working with Buckingham Branch Railroad, and it was scheduled for August, and it got pushed back. And it was looking like maybe September, and then it got pushed into October. And I think they were impacted by the hurricane as much as we were. I really haven't got an update on them, if they're going to get out here before the weather gets cold or not. But as soon as I know a new date, I'll pass it along to the board. But it doesn't look like it's going to happen in October. The only other thing I've got is, Mr. Bryant, it's in your district, the paving. We're, we're planning to overlay those bed areas on 602, and with all the work we've been up to, we didn't get to it yet. If we don't get to overlay it before the weather gets cold, we'll at least put some leveling down on those bed areas and try to smooth it out the best we can. But other than that, I can open it up to you guys for questions, comments, or concerns.
District 1?
Yeah. Mr. Frederick, you and I already talked about Stonewall Road, but there was one other thing that I had. Clint's sitting here. He wanted to come down at night. I seen water standing in places during that hurricane that I've never in all my life. I haven't seen the water come across my road since 1986, and it come across my road. But it's one thing, down at Bryant's store where y'all had to dig the pipe up. I've had a couple citizens contact me about that the ditch is so deep down now. Is it anything we can do? Because if somebody runs off of that, it's going to hurt a car to pieces.
Okay, we'll have to take a look at that at Bryant's store, you said.
Yeah, it's on Carter's Field Road. It's about half a mile up from Bryant's store. Straight in Martin's Curve right there. It was a call, but it was stopped up. Water was three feet across that road. I've never seen water standing that road, and it was just nowhere for it to go.
Most of our drainage is designed for like the 10-year storm, or sometimes on a bigger road, like a primary, it might be the 50-year storm. I think what we just experienced was like a 500-year storm. It's none of our.
I got 10 inches of rain in two days, so it's got to go somewhere.
Yeah, we'll take a second look at that, see if we can do something with the ditch, maybe like we did over on that road we addressed for you.
Thank you. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
District 2?
Mr. Frederick?
Yes, sir.
I can say nothing but thank you. It looks great, and I know it's been a long road when we get here. But I'm telling y'all, y'all did a great job. I think I burned a tank of gas up riding back and forth looking. And I want to tell you what, there is no reason that anyone should have an accident there now. God forbid, if they do, it's, did the best you could do to make the best of a bad situation. And thank you to VDOT. I will tell you that it looks like y'all stayed in Dillon and stayed on the corner of Bell Road and 15, down almost to the chip mill plant for the last couple of weeks. So I feel like you've given everything to my district that you can possibly do in the last six weeks. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll pass it on to the guys and also Traffic Engineering. They were a big part of it.
Okay. District 3?
As we spoke earlier, I just want to say thank you to VDOT for fixing the roads that I had concerns with. You and I had already talked, and they already fixed them out. I'd like to thank Mr. Stone and his crew. They took care of it timely. A lot of ruts got washed in, a lot of the gravel roads, and they fixed them within a week after I notified them. So I just want to say thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'll pass that along.
District 4?
Yes, Mr. Frederick. I rode down there to look at that piece where y'all put that gravel in, and it looked like it's settled, which I know it's going to settle, but after that big rain. So I don't know, maybe just somebody swing by there and look and see if it settled down farther than y'all wanted it to. You know, I don't know y'all's procedure, but you could see a big difference in how high it was before we had all that rain and then after we did, so.
Okay. Yeah, we'll take, we'll have to follow up and take a look at that.
Yeah. And the other one is on Fannie White Road where we had to end up, the road got closed and a car got stranded in there. The problem with that is the low spot is not where the bridge is. You know what I'm saying? Your bridge and your guard rail is kind of still up here. The low spot is after you come down off of that hill or on the troublesome creek side of it, that low spot. And I was just wondering if there's some kind of thing, you see them in some of these other places where just a sign is put up on the side of the road with a reflector, and it's got like numbers on it saying, you know, water is this high, this high, something like that. Where when, you know, they'll see that sign, and no, that sign's supposed to be, water's not supposed to be at that sign. And it's that, you know, I don't know what, but I know the guy that ran in, that got stranded in there. Fortunately, he was able to get out with no real big deal, but.
Yeah. I'm not, I get what you're saying, sir. We don't, I don't know of us having one of those signs anywhere in my residency that shows how deep the water is. We, we do a lot of campaigns that are turn around, don't drown. I don't think I could encourage anybody to drive in any amount of water.
No, not any amount at all, but.
You don't really know how, what the road looks like. Even if you can see the road, it might be washed out under the pavement.
Right. Road could be washed out under it, but I guess, you know, it was no such thing as a perfect storm, but it was almost like it was all done overnight, and the vehicles that had the trouble, it was still dark when they came through there. So they couldn't tell if it was, if the road was there and just wet like they normally used to, just the road being wet. And then once they got in it, it was, you know, just nowhere to go, but.
Yeah, it's a bad situation.
Yes, but, you know, I don't know if, do you know what I'm talking about, but those reflector things probably use the boat that wide, and it's got, would at least tell you the water's up on that sign.
I've seen signs like you're talking about on dams, like where they show how the water height is.
And, but I've seen them on the side of the roads, like in Henrico County on the way to the racetrack down there. If you go to one of those back roads, it's got a low spot in it like that, and you see a little sign right there on the side of that bridge. And it's probably about a foot wide maybe, and, you know, that much taller than the road. And it's got at least a number or a mark on it, just to let somebody know that, you know, there's water in the road.
Yeah, I'll check into that. I'm certainly not aware of it being used here, but that doesn't mean.
Yeah, I haven't seen one anywhere in Buckingham, but.
Yeah, I'll follow up on you.
Those two are the only thing, and you did some improvement up there at, coming out of Hall Road up here on 60, cutting that back. I spoke with your main supervisor there. He came by and spoke to me, wanted to know exactly what the lady was talking about, and I told him. And I think they took care of it that day or the next couple of days, so.
Okay, good deal.
That was definitely, was improved there at the line of sight.
Good deal. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
District 5?
I usually have something to complain about, but right now, I really don't have anything. But I thank y'all for this job you did on the trees and all in this hurricane.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
About a few rows of blocks, and right upon all of, a lot too, but.
Sir, thank you.
District 6, we don't have anything. We thank you for what you've done, helped us in. District 6. District 7?
Only thing I can tell you is, you know, when that water was going across the bridge down below my house on Thomas Road, it washed a lot of the pavement right on off the road, right in the field right beside the road. Anyway, I hope we can be able to patch that up, and I know they're busy right now. And you know what you was talking to me about the railroad?
Yes, sir.
The person who called you, called, let me know that, she said they was going to start on, on the 14th, which is a day ago.
Yeah, they didn't make that the.
And that hadn't happened yet either, so. And one other thing I've seen, I've run across this bridge, and it is just rough. Looked like it's falling apart in the middle, and it's on Challow, I might say it wrong, Challow Road Bridge?
Challow, Challow Road.
Challow, Challow. I said it right.
That's a timber deck bridge, and it's had an asphalt overlay across the top of it. And when the, if the boards get any kind of bounce to them, like if the bolts that are holding them on are the littlest bit loose, that the asphalt will come off real easy. They've patched it up several times. I think Mr. Gilliam's brought it to my attention in the past. Nothing really wrong with the bridge other than the roughness, so.
Yeah, it was, it was rough the last few times I've used it. I don't know if it happened anything when the water was high.
Yeah, we'll have to, I'll take a second look at that. Or not a second look, I'll check on it. Sounds like we have to fix some potholes on it.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Ms. Emerson, Public Hearing?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This evening, we do have a public hearing for case 24 SUP 347. Your applicant, it's John D'Amio at 2697 Gravel Hill Road in Dillon. This case was introduced to you last month. His request is to apply for a special use permit to construct and operate a private grass airstrip and hangar. Mr. D'Amio is here to address any questions or concerns, either before or after the public hearing.
One question. Why did the planning, planning commission want to put a dumpster stand there?
There was a discussion during the planning commission meeting that members of the planning commission did not feel that the applicant would need to adhere to the solid waste ordinance, and they requested that, that condition be removed from the list of conditions for the permit request.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's good. I didn't think of a fair for, put a dumpster stand there. Board, we're going to question for a public hearing. Here now, so opening the public hearing. Anybody sign of speak?
No, sir.
We close. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'm making a motion that we approve it. Chairman?
If the motion is seconded, we approve this request. Are there any questions on the motion? All in favor? Seven, yes. Okay.
All right, the next case before you, Mr. Chairman, is an introduction of case 24 SUP 348. Our applicant is Karen Krepp. She resides at 1741 Spyglass Drive, number 229 in Austin, Texas. The property on which the request is being made is Tax Map 34, parcel 20, Lot C. It's two and a half acres, and it is located at 504 Woodland Church Road here in Buckingham in the James River Magisterial District. This property is Zoned Village Center. The request from the applicant is to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating an Airbnb bed and breakfast short-term rental. The applicant is asking the Board of Supervisors to hold a public hearing for this request. There are 11 conditions attached to the permit request. I do have condition number five highlighted, which is the request that the applicant pursues a commercial solid waste container and follow the county's solid waste ordinance. There was discussion at the planning commission regarding the solid waste ordinance. Ms. Krepp's indicated that she utilizes a service with the Yogaville community. I did check with Lynn Hill, who's the Director of Solid Waste. He's not aware of any recognized trash service that is handled by the Yogaville community, but there are certainly certain companies such as J.C. Trash Recycling that has the home receptacles at the end of the driveway. As long as she's adhering to the solid waste ordinance for the guests that utilize the Airbnb, the bed and breakfast, and that could be something else you may want to discuss this evening. Just to further let you know that the case was introduced to the planning commission on August 26, and the public hearing was held on September 23. The planning commission does unanimously recommend approval of this request. Would it be the pleasure of the Board of Supervisors to hold a public hearing for this request? And if so, the next meeting is November 12, 2024 at 6:00 PM.
What is the pleasure of the board?
The applicant is available if you have any questions for her as well.
Get it, Mike?
Yes.
Joining virtually.
Okay. Anybody have any question for the applicant?
So what you were just talking about, is that number five?
Yes, sir, Mr. Allen.
Okay, that's all I'm checking. Already ate it.
I guess we need a motion to set a public hearing for next month. November the 12th. If the motion is seconded, we set this public hearing November the 12th at 6:00 o'clock. Are there any questions? All in favor? Seven, yes.
See, that's all I have for you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all.
Yes, ma'am, you're welcome. We move on to Department of Agency reports and items for consideration. You see the first one here, the request from the Commonwealth attorney? Was your transfer of $1,000 from the existing Fort Ritter account that the Commonwealth attorney officer to the K-9 Fund of the Buckingham County Sheriff Office for providing training and equipment for the K-9 unit. What is the board's pleasure?
A move would be approved, Mr. Chairman.
If the motion is seconded, this be approved. Are there any questions on the motion? All in favor? Seven, yes. The second, M1, M2, rather, the register, register. Consider request to appropriate $5,640.30 back to the Electrical Board and register budget, which will be seen as a reimbursement. which will be seen as a reimbursement from the candidate Bob Goode for the, uh, recount conducted in office the first twenty twenty-four. Page of the board on that.
Second.
Motion is second. We was, uh, consider this request. Are there any questions? All in favor? Seven, yes. Uh, the treasure. Uh, consider request for me public service refund, refund for central telephone company N B A amount of eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-eight cent after receiving update values from the S C C. What does the board pledge you?
Make motion, Mr. Chairman, we approve it.
I second it.
Motion is second. We approve this request from the treasure. Are there any questions? All in favor? Seven, yes. Number four, the E M S, consider appropriation for the reserve funds for the E S staffing at the Avonia Unit.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that we do it.
Got a sucker?
I'll second it.
Motion is second that we consider this appropriation for the E M S at the Avonia Unit Staffing. Are there any questions? Seven, yes. Finest, consider contract with Robertson, former Cox and Associates for the fiscal year twenty-four audit.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Uh, as Mr. Trump was here earlier, she finished up on the twenty-three audit. This is something we have to do every year. We have to get the, to sign an engagement letter. We have to approve them to have to come in and look at our records for F Y twenty-four. So even though we just finished twenty-three's audit, they will be here if you approve this night in, uh, November to start the twenty-four audit. So hopefully we get back on track and we'll have the final twenty-four audit till you sometime beginning of the new year.
Okay. Page of the board. Sorry. If a motion is second, we approve this. Are there any questions? All in favor? Seven, yes. Six, consider appropriating the county administrator voting credentials for the twenty twenty-four VACO annual business meeting. Motion to do that?
Hard to say. That's one of those things. Usually we have a board member that goes, attends that conference, but I don't think anybody's going this year. So I'll be there so I can cast your vote if you want me to.
Okay, thank you. If a motion is second, are there any questions? All in favor? Ain't going to, ain't gonna fool again. Seven, yes. Thank you. Uh, number seven. Um, the sheriff consider appropriating E C O slash T D O reimbursement program funds from the revenue line item to the overtime services and wages and part-time services and wages line items. What does the board?
I would say, Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, for grant funding, so this is money that they're asked to be reimbursed. They incurred their expenses and now they're asking the state to reimburse them for these calls. And we have received the money, so they're actually be put back into their budget.
Motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
And if a motion is second, then we approve this. Are there any questions? All in favor? Seven, yes. All right. Number eight, consider making donation to the town of Dillon for Halloween trick-or-treat supplies.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I was at the Dillon Town Council meeting last Tuesday night and, uh, as you know, um, the town of Dillon has a huge, uh, trick-or-treat event on Halloween. Not just for the town of Dillon, but it's pretty much countywide. Uh, I don't know how many hundreds of kids from one end of the county, um, travel through the bottom in the town of Dillon. I know the sheriff's department helps and whatnot. And, uh, I'd like to make a motion tonight that the board contribute, uh, five hundred dollars to the town for the children for Halloween. Uh, town, uh, sometimes struggles and has a burden, a, a, a lot of money being spent. And if there's any way we can help these children and help the whole community, I'd like to see the county do that for the kids on Halloween. So I'd like to make a motion.
I think it's for a good cause. I'd like to see the board support it if it's willing to board. If a motion is second that we donate five hundred dollars to the town of Dillon for the help with the cause of the trick-or-treat. Is that correct? All in favor? Seven, yes. I know Sam, Sam Ransome be proud of you for doing that. I come to thank you tonight personally. All right, let's move on down to the appointments to committees and boards and agency. And we got number one, in one, consider appointment at least two more members to the board of the Building Code of Appeals. These members should have construction background. We got Mr. David Ball, Mr. Steve Mayo, Metro, Mr. Steve Metro and Mr. Larry Haskins. Previous appointment, so we need two more, right, Carl?
Yes, sir.
And the board member have anymore they want to put on this board?
They got, um, I got two names that were given to me a while ago.
Okay.
Eddie Spencer and Morgan Dunwood to add to it.
Getting ready to ask Morgan what he consider serving on.
Do, uh, Morgan. Morgan Dunwood's airplane pilot, he not a construction.
Actually, he told flies on Mr. Damaio's plane to the Super Bowl, guys.
Uh, we, um, I think, I think Morgan was served good on his, uh, well, first in the construction. I've served on the board, he real intelligent about that.
What was the other name, Danny?
Uh, Eddie Spencer. I was told I make a.
That's a motion, Danny.
I'll make a motion to add Eddie Spencer and Morgan Dunwood.
We got a sucker.
I'll second. I'll second it.
If a motion is second that we add Mr. Eddie Spencer and Mr. Morgan Dunwood to the Board of Appeals. Are there any questions? All in favor? Seven, yes. All right, Mr. Dunwood.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, Kenny, attorney of matters.
From here, I have one informational item tonight is, as the board is aware, the S U P issued by this board in regard to Mountain Pine Avonia LLC and Mountain Vine Avonia Two LLC. Challenge in court that S U P was challenged. Judge Horshe, out of Charlottesville, who was designated as a special judge to hear that matter on October fourth, two thousand twenty-four by a lot of opinion to counsel, uh, dismissed that matter with prejudice. So challenge currently to the S U P has been. Well, nothing else. Any questions?
The question for the attorney. I mean, thank you. That's right. Uh, Ken Administrator.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, just something quick. Uh, just a reminder that our meeting in November will be on this Tuesday, uh, November twelfth due to the Veterans Holiday and the, uh, local conference. So we will be on the twelfth, the second. Will be, I don't know if it's the second Tuesday, it'll be the Tuesday after the second Monday. Um, also, I provided you tonight with a personnel committee report under separate cover. Uh, if you all agree with that report, there's no action need to be taken. If you do have any questions or concerns about the report, we can go in personnel in executive closed session to talk about those items. Chairman.
Okay. Other board matters.
I just want to give, uh, Mr. Chairman, I just want to give, uh, a big shout out to our volunteers and our E M S. Last Friday, I was, uh, first one on the scene to accident on Scott's Bottom Road. A lady was coming from sixty headed toward Chuck Stop and I was headed toward sixty toward Cumberland and hit a oak tree head on with, uh, entrapment. Uh, it was a very serious wreck. And I want to tell you, living in the country, we hear a lot of complaints from law enforcement, about law enforcement, about our E M S, about our fire departments and even our dispatches. I called nine one one and nine oh three when I first pulled up on this entrapment. At nine twenty-one, this lady was loaded eighteen minutes later to head to a helicopter pad. We had three deputies, two fire trucks, and I counted eleven firefighters volunteer. Some of them weren't in trucks, but they actually came from their jobs. We had two rescue squads from E M S and Cody actually, uh, was there on the scene as well. But this is on a back road in a, in a rural county. And from the dispatcher to the sheriff's department to E M S and our volunteer firefighters. If this had happened in the middle of Johnston Willis parking lot, I don't see how in the world anybody could have got somebody out of a trapped car in eighteen minutes to have them loaded to take to the helicopter pad. So I just want to tell you that citizens of Buckingham, yes, it may be times where things don't go exactly right. But on a Friday morning at nine o'clock, when you have eleven volunteer fire departments from the town of Dillon, three deputies and two rescue squads, uh, I don't see how possibly it could be any better. And, uh, I just want to give each and every one of those people, starting at the dispatcher, uh, a big shout out because, uh, we have a lot to be proud of in our community. Thank you.
And on that note, I just wanted to thank all the E M S and fire department people that performed the water rescues. What was it, five? You said, was it five that night that y'all had to get out of the water? And it's, it was just, I know the one down Slate Hill, I think it was three individuals in that vehicle, wasn't it? And.
Talk about first with Connor Dillon.
Thank you. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, there's a, another, uh, item for other board matters. I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we, uh, make a resolution hopefully next month to honor Ms. Gwendolyn Gregory.
Could I go to second?
I'll second.
Supposed to make it as a motion, I make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Garrett, second by Mr. Palmer there. We would, uh, pass a resolution honoring Gwendolyn Gregory. One worked at the school board for many years and, uh, thinks she well deserved it. Are there any questions on the motion? All in favor? Seven, yes. Number board matters, we need to go into executive session.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We go into executive session under State of Virginia Code two point one dash thirty-seven eleven dot A dot three. Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of public held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. And also Code of Virginia two point one dash thirty-seven eleven dot A dot seven. Consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. And I make that motion.
Second.
Sorry.
The motion is second that we go in the executive session under the code that was stated. Are there any questions? All in favor? Take a five-minute break. Five, five-minute break.
Yeah. Does that work?
Regular session?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we return to regular session and that it is certified that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only business matters related to the codes of which the executive meeting was convened, was discussed, or considered in the closed executive session, and I make that motion.
Second?
The motion is second to return to regular session. All in favor? Any action after the results of a closed executive session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would also like to make a motion as a result of executive session, make a motion to that the board authorized the county administrator to sign a contract to begin negotiations to sell approximately nine acres of land at the industrial park to Central Virginia Christian School.
We go to second. The motion was made by supervisor Garrett, second by supervisor Gilliam. Are there any questions on the motion? All in favor? Seven years.
Like I said, this to my fellow board members very briefly. I've been serving on the board for about 34 years. In my 34 years, I've never seen a judge coming before this board and make a presentation like Judge Blessing did tonight. I think he should be highly recommended, and he thanked the board for their support and work at the courthouse, and I really think we ought to send him a letter of appreciation for coming and talking to us like that. The first time I seen him in 37 years. He should be highly recommended. And I got a different feeling about it now if I have to go before him. I don't know when I might have to go there.[1688.02][1688.02](Laughter)
If I go, Mr. Chairman, if I go, I'm gonna take Cameron with me.
Yes.
All right. Could we send him a letter of thank you, Carl? All right. Thank you.
He might be hurting.
Okay. But in all honesty, I think that was real nice he done that and made me feel good about that. Because we cut so much hill, we renovated the courthouse, we spent too much money there, and we done this, and hear all kind of negative stuff. It's good to hear something positive even then and then. So I really feel good, and I thank him for coming and sharing it with us. If nothing else, need to come before the board, we adjourn. Okay?
My daughter loves that man to death. She works for him.
What she work for? Oh, good.
She...